Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our council meeting tonight. If you'd all join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Erin, would you please take your role?
Councilwoman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Here.
Councilwoman Poynner.
Here.
And we expect Councilwoman Utris and Ann Schirren shortly.
Yeah. Okay, great. Awesome. Um, first thing we're going to do tonight is we want to acknowledge somebody who has spent a lot of years helping our community and keeping our community safe and just a really great public servant. Kevin Graybill has resigned from the Manchester Fire Department. He was our chief this past year. And so if you wouldn't mind meeting me up front here, I'd like to present him. This certificate of retirement is greatly presented to Kevin Graybill for thirty-two years of outstanding service and contributions to the City of Manchester as a volunteer fireman and as fire chief of the City of Manchester's fire, volunteer fire department. So I want to say thank you and congratulations. Okay, yeah, that's next. And we're not done celebrating just yet.
It's actually an old fire engine.
So, Fire Association, got this for Kevin for all his service.
Wow, cool. That's really cool.
So, a lot of, a lot of things just magically happened down at the fire station. Hours, countless hours, we put in by Kevin. Just, just did it. Nobody asked him to do it, just did it. So, we appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you. Got the old timer on it.
Oh, he's an old timer now. Do you want that chair out of the way?
If you could.
Yes.
That'd be great. I thought you guys get along. We do. But we only have this to come once.
Thank you so much, Kevin.
Thank you. That guy's over there.
Thank you for joining us. He's all yours now, Rhonda.
Oh, wait.
He forgot he said there's a certificate. Um, next, I need approval of the agenda for today. We talked about potentially though moving Jim up after in the regular agenda items. We're going to move him up after six point two, but six point nine from six point three, if that's okay for tonight. And if that's okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. I will to approve the amended agenda. Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Maryann?
Yes.
All right, next it's public input. Please come to the podium, please state your name and address before you begin with any of your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council could take no formal action on comments given during the public input period, which do not relate to action items on the agenda. So anybody who'd like to speak to the council tonight?
Jay Schmidt, seven fifty, Bridgewood Drive, Manchester, Iowa. I'm going to talk about, I'm going to give you example of what the efficiency committee can do to help out the council. Okay? We're going to talk about the new street cleaning machine. Our street clean machine is getting old and it's nice having lanes streets in town. And it keeps our place looking really good. Front of everybody's house, leaves down everything. And I think it's a real good thing. But the new machine's going to cost three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's a huge pile of money. But right now, current interest rates are seven percent. I just called the bank yesterday to see what machine we do and equipment goes for, they said around seven percent. Maybe you guys get a little better, maybe not. So that'll give us about twenty-five thousand dollars a year for interest to pay in that machine. Okay? And last year, the way I understand, maintenance was twelve thousand dollars on the old machine. So what the efficiency committee is doing is just giving the council another way to look at something. They're not trying to suggest or anything, just give me another way to look at it. Now, I had two more things brought up to me, different alternatives for the street cleaning machine. But I'm not going to go into that tonight. But that's what the efficiency committee can do for you. Okay, this probably wasn't presented to you. Actually, if you had bought last year, saved twelve thousand dollars already. Because unless you guys can pay for it, you got to pay interest on it. Anyway, so I'm just giving you a little example of what the efficiency committee can do. And there's people that would be on this committee, good, solid citizens. And they have a little more time and they'd only be assigned one thing, so they'll be able to do it. So that's about all I got to say on this. I sure hope everybody will look at it. I'd like to talk to the council about it. And rather than have five minutes, maybe a little more time and some other people will come up, but that hasn't been approved yet. So anyway, just give you another way to look at this. Appreciate the time. Next line. Anybody got questions for me?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to approach the council? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. First items, item three point one. I need a motion to approve minutes of the January twentieth budget work session and the minutes of the January twenty-seventh regular city council meeting and the minutes of the February third budget work session. Next, I need a motion to approve resolution thirteen approving the bills. Need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the city reports from Park and Rec, Waste Water Department, and the revenue and expense monthly activity reports. I need a motion to approve the liquor license for Chung Garden. And I think it's a short-term one for the St. Mary's Gala. Next, I need a motion to proceed with third consideration and final adoption of ordinance one. And this is fixing and establishing the grades of streets affected by the twenty-twenty-four street improvement project. Then I have a motion to approve the following commercial incentive program grant applications. And this is from Eastern Iowa Pumping slash Joe Hildebrand for the property at nine eighteen East Main Street, as recommended by the design committee. It's an acquisition grant in the amount of five thousand dollars. It's a facade grant for seventy-five hundred dollars, an interior grant in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, and a parking lot grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Those are all of my items. I'll take a motion in a second, then we can open up for discussion. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Does anybody know what Joe Hildebrand's going to put in this building that he's reworking?
He met with the design committee last week and he is looking to either put offices or potentially a restaurant there. He's still trying to get, he's still listening to people for interest, but he wants to get the front done so that he can have something to market a little bit better with the realtors.
Okay. Some beautiful design he's got. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Maryann?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
All right, next, we have a public hearing tonight. And it is by ten, and I'm opening the public hearing on the vacation of easements described as the lot five-foot utility easement on the east line of lot four and five-foot utility easement upon the west line of lot five for the City of Manchester, Iowa. And Tim, I'm going to let you speak to this.
Yeah, so this is just a basic utility easement that was going to be between those two lots. Those lots are going to be combined because this is where A-one mobile storage is building or building over top of that. We didn't have any utilities in the area, so really it was not a necessary easement. And so we can go ahead and vacate that easement that would clean up that property.
This is a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions or comments about that, right now is the time to say. Okay, hearing none, at five eleven, I'm going to close the public hearing. And before us, we have resolution fourteen approving the vacation of those easements. Now, looking for a second, or a motion in a second, excuse me.
I'm making a motion right now. One second.
Any other further comments or questions by the council? Hearing none, Joe?
Yes.
Maryann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have Maggie Berger here to see us tonight.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maggie with Spear Financial. We did hold a bond sale today. There were two issuances of debt similar to your past years. You have a general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty twenty-five A, and then a taxable general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-five B, same amount, splitting that. Again, we do taxable when there's some private purpose involved. This is a forgivable loan program if I'm, if I'm not mistaken with the developer. So that gives way to private purpose. Let's look at our twenty twenty-five A bonds first. There were six bids received today. That's fantastic. We're happy, we like going into the new year and seeing this kind of bidding action. We are recommending that you would award this evening to UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri, as they were the lowest bidder at three point eight seven zero zero percent. That's pretty low compared to what we were seeing in the fall. We were still seeing around that four, four and a quarter percent. We do anticipate rates to stay right in this area, though, from what we're reading in the municipal market. You know, everyone and what they're talking, we anticipate these rates to stick around probably until at least August or September in this batch, and they could fluctuate weekly. But I think coming out of last weekend, you can see a three eighty-seven to a four point one four out of these six bidders was pretty tight bidding on that six hundred and seventy thousand dollar amount. Page two of that first handout does list all of their interest rates. So for example, here we start from a three point two and goes down to a four. Most everybody ends at that four to four and a quarter. So they're all still kind of right there where those interest rates are. It just really depends on how, how, what they wanted to give you as the low interest rate in the beginning. The third and final page of our twenty twenty-five A bonds is our final debt service schedule locked in as of today. This is ten-year debt. The city's been very good at issuing ten-year debt, which is very short for cities. The call feature on this is June first of twenty thirty-two. And all that really means is at that time, if interest rates are lower than the remaining interest rates, you'd have the opportunity to refinance and save money. Again, when we do a refinance, it's only for the remaining maturities. We don't stretch it out any further. At that time also, if you had money ahead, you could pay ahead, but the call is only at your option. So you're the only one, if interest rates are four percent still at that time, you'll just continue to pay and pay it to the maturity. So you just have that option and you can pay down small amounts too. This has to be paid down in five thousand dollar increments. So if at that time even you add fifty thousand dollars, you'd be able to use some of that to pay this down. The twenty twenty-five B bonds, there were five bids received today, which was fantastic as well. This, we knew would carry a higher interest rate. In my conversations with Tim and Erin leading up to this, and even this morning, I thought we'd be in the five point five to six percent range, which is really where we've seen. So we're happy today that our low interest rate came from Bankers Bank of Madison, Wisconsin, at a five point zero four nine three percent. So very good, but I want to point out that on the taxable range, every underwriter is really different on where they're feeling that taxable market. And that taxable market really goes more in line with where market is for you and I, right? You know, we can go out and we can borrow at six and seven percent right now. These are investments, so they know that they're safe and they're secure, so they're going to get a little bit lower interest rate. But to have Bankers Bank at a five point zero four and to have UMB Bank at a five sixty-four, it's a pretty substantial spread. And that's really where we're seeing that interest rate market today. Page two, again, those range, those rates, as you can tell, really don't start. Even on the United Bankers Bank, four point six five is as low as they're willing to go sort of upfront into that five, five and a quarter, even the six percent from UMB Bank on the high side of things. Again, this bond is payable also after June first of twenty thirty-two. Pretty much identical debt service schedules, it's just the difference in interest. And again, that's a tax decision that is made by bond counsel based on the private purpose. This really leading the IRS is really the one that, that sort of instructs that one part of this issuance had to be taxable versus tax exempt. So with that, I'd answer any questions, but we would recommend that you would award, based on the two proposals and resolutions that are in front of you this evening.
And just so the public knows, this is for our development agreements with S and R Construction in Eastern Iowa, escalating for the next phases of their residential subdivision projects. Any questions by the council? Hey, did you want to add anything, Tim?
You will have these monies on March eleventh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie.
We still need a motion.
Yes, that's one of just two resolutions.
She does really good work.
I am going to ask a question.
Okay, may I? Go ahead.
Please, absolutely. We had talked earlier, we had hoped that we would get some bids from our local banks. Any idea why we did not?
Yeah, no, so I, I want to talk about that. They did not, and no one gave us indication from UMB or Bankers Bank today that there was any participation by your local bank. That does not mean that they won't be calling your local bank this week and possibly drumming up some business and saying, hey, we bought this deal and we'd like to see if you're interested in it. I think part of the reason is it's six hundred and seventy thousand. To you and I, that's a lot of money. To underwriters and banks, large banks like UMB and you and Bankers Bank, not large dot marks of dollars. Had this been one or two million dollars, they may have reached out to your local banks sooner rather than before the sale. I anticipate they'll reach out, especially Bankers Bank is of interest to me. We haven't seen Bankers Bank bid on many deals, but Bankers Bank corresponds with two of your banks in town, which just makes me think that they popped in, they had a really good interest rate. And I have this feeling that maybe they'll be calling the banks and seeing if there's some interest there. It also could be that they may have reached out to your banks. Banks have to collateralize municipal debt differently than they collateralize the debt that they've offered you and I on car loans and mortgage loans, because these are property tax dollars. These are taxpayer dollars that will be paying these debts back and things like that. And so they have to collateralize that. Most banks have a policy that they can't exceed a certain amount of borrowing, and those banks could very well be at their limitations or not able to take on larger amounts of that borrowing. But yeah, we know both of these banks are banks that correspond regionally in your area. The Bankers Bank, even Charlotte in my office was like, where'd that come from? So we were surprised, so it makes me think that they'll reach out later this week. But at the six hundred and seventy thousand, they may have just been willing to take it today, knowing that they would be able to resell it to other banks in the area as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
I will make a motion there to accept two bids, actually, I guess thirty-one.
Adopt resolution fifteen.
Resolution fifteen, sixty, right? Yeah, right, fifteen, sorry.
All right. Very great discussion by the council. Okay? Bill?
Yes.
Maryann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, then I'll take a motion to adopt resolution sixteen by somebody.
I'm going to see that, there's a resolution sixteen.
Okay? Any other questions? Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Maryann?
Yes.
Okay, and we're going to move Jim up. Thank you so much, Maggie.
Thank you very much.
We've got five pending of the baiting cases right now. Three of them were set for pre-trial today. And one of them is set for trial on, we talked to Tim, both Tims about this. One's set for trial on the twenty-fourth of February, one's set for the tenth of March. Two are still with the police department to be served. And today was the date for the fifth one, for the independent to decide whether they want to be contested or not. So it won't, you know, turn into the day. We went, I went ahead, I met with both Tims before the meeting tonight. There are two, there are some properties where it's not as clear. Clearly, I wouldn't want them next to my house. Whether they're a bait, whether they're a nuisance, I'm going to have to go back and take a little research tonight. Couple of them are just on the edge where we're not, we don't want to, want to file without knowing. But we do have, just to let you know, we're going through with our position. Even though these ones that are set for trial, even if they're cleaned up, we're asking for a fine. Just so we're still following that procedure.
Right.
It's my understanding, some of them have cleaned up a little bit, and while that's commendable, we shouldn't have to do this. Any questions?
Just appreciate your diligence on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, I don't usually kick off early for philosophy. This year, they don't, but tonight they want me, so I said I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our retailers committee here tonight. And as everybody knows, they had a survey, was it last fall?
Oh, yeah.
Last fall. So I'm here to present the findings of that to the council.
Yep, I'm Kurt Himes with Himes Awards and Custom Guess. Thank you to the City of Manchester and the council for letting me speak on behalf of some of our Manchester area chamber retailers who are here with me and the ones that cannot be here with tonight. I'm here to talk about the survey the retailers put out and the concerns on the growth of Manchester that we are seeing. A few months ago, at a retail meeting, some of us were talking about business, what the future of Manchester looks like, and what we think the people of Manchester would support. One of the retailers came up with the idea of a survey, so I decided I would take the lead. And we came up with questions of what we wanted to hear answers to and general questions and questions that might give us some uneasy answers. We didn't want this, or we didn't want this to come from the chamber, the city, or an organization, because we were hoping to get honest, real answers from around two hundred people. Well, we ended up with seven hundred and fifty-plus responses with very insightful information. We came from that, that the people of Manchester are hungry for new, exciting endeavors, businesses, but also giving us criticism of the retailers on what is wrong and what we could do better. Over seventy percent of the, of the people wanted to see more small businesses. Some things people wanted to see are diverse restaurants, things for kids and families, arts, bookstores, et cetera. With that, some of the criticism is that retailers could do better with consistent hours that line up with each other and have better shopping experience. In the past couple of months, some of the retailers have told me that they've been busy and some have been really struggling because of walk-ins have dropped. And let's be honest, that is because of empty storefronts. People aren't out walking around shopping from place to place like they were because there's honestly nowhere to go. Sadly, on a perfect fall day, I looked outside, and it was about one o'clock afternoon, and I saw four cars parked on Main Street. It was a Friday. Granted, some of that's economy, some of that's other factors. But also, we feel Manchester is being kind of stagnant and barely growing. We can blame this on certain factors, but now we're at a point where there's no more excuses. We have small businesses popping up in Independence, El Cator, along with Dyersville Industrial Area that has gone insane over the past couple of years. We need to figure out how to fill these empty storefronts, but also keep businesses staying. In a town of fifty-two hundred people that is forty-five minutes from three of the biggest cities in Iowa, we shouldn't have sent the same storefronts empty for years. I did a lot of research on the fastest-growing small towns in Iowa, and I can only give suggestions because it's above my pay grade and all gets done. But these things, three things that stood out. One, we do offer grants, the city offers some great grants, but there are a lot of cities that offer a hundred percent grants for signage and beautification of their buildings. Also, low-interest loans that the city could range from, there are cities that range from fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. Two, I've seen amendments to the abandonment properties code that tell owners of retail commercial buildings that have a year to fill it or be fined. Three, property tax rate for businesses to stay for lowering rent for staying or for people to get lower rent. Because let's be honest, for me, what's stopping me from closing up and just starting out my garage? I don't need to pay two income or two mortgages. I decided to invest in downtown because I was expecting a thriving downtown to help my business grow. There is real tension, nervousness, and wondering about the future. According to some people, small businesses are not as important as large companies, but I firmly believe a town with small businesses get more people to town. It shows town that is thriving, and it shows that possibly to help or make a decision that people want to move here. I won't take any more up too much time, but we all must work together. We are asking the City of Manchester, Delaware County Economic Development, Delaware County Tourism, Manchester Area Chamber of Commerce, and each board member who is part of those organizations to ask tough questions, dig deep, and get this figured out. It's not one organization to bring in the businesses, it takes every single person to work together. I don't want the survey to be another thing that, that nothing comes about it. The one thing that we keep hearing and we're kind of tired of hearing is that is the way that has always been done in Manchester. It's time to move forward, come up with new ideas, act on them. Thank you for your time, and going forward, someone from the retail committee will be giving the city council quarterly updates on how things are going around town. Thank you for your time, and I may have to answer any questions.
So do you want to explain to people what we do currently for some of our downtown things, all the different things we offer?
Yeah, actually, I don't know what Erin talked about, because she does people lead on that.
Yeah.
Well, we have the downtown and commercial incentive program, and those provide grants. Some are fifty fifty percent grants and some are one-third, two-thirds grants for the fronts of buildings, the interiors, the parking lots, for as we get outside of the downtown district. There's a second story loan program, and there's acquisition assistance. So if somebody is purchasing a property, we assist with those costs up to five thousand dollars. Owning programs, so to, to replace the owning, and that's either based on a square footage or a
Linear footage.
Yeah, linear footage or, or a, is it a two-thirds, one-third?
It's two-thirds, one-third.
Or a two-thirds, one-thirds, whichever is better. So those programs have been around for a while, and I know that the downtown incentive committee has, or the design committee is what we call them. Let's talk about maybe meeting with retailers and seeing if there's a way to revamp or another direction to head with that program. It's funded with TIF dollars, so.
The council approves a budget, and we do transfer money from the tip into that. Challenge, when you run into an intercourse tonight, you guys are approved, so on East Main Street is trying to find that balance of what economically makes sense. Because downtown businesses, you know, they're smaller, more affordable that way. Challenges with payback is on the property taxes, keeping businesses full, getting people downtown. And I agree, this is the first time I was able to actually hear about the survey because I wasn't participating in it. So I appreciate hearing, I'd like to sit down with the downtown retail committee and talk a little bit about this. We're just a retail committee, it's just downtown.
It's, it's, it's the neighbor retail committee, but yeah, so we meet once a month, and then get you the next time we meet, so.
So I'd like to talk about it and see what we can do to expand things, because the other thing we do offer is tax payment. Now, that depends on if you're taking a building down to change the valuation. There's a lot of, you know, workings, it's the details that come out to figure out the best way to improve this. There's committees around this, El Cator, Independence, they were able to participate in the community developed block grant for facade renovation. And that was where they got like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you had to get easements for the property owners because the city was investing public funds on private property. They get easements so they could touch their building base to do that and work their way that way. The stuff we're doing, but it's nice and generous, it's quick and easy, but there may be something we need to look at differently. I know one of the things we'll be talking to the council about is our downtown streets and sidewalks and planning on how to redo those, and that's going to be of a huge impact on downtown businesses too. Yeah, I'm really excited about this. I appreciate, to maybe take this up, but it is something that we're going to have to look at and make some decisions.
Yeah.
And you know, several cities have, you know, looked at our, our incentive program and modeled after that. If you have examples from other cities, if you could give me those, because, you know, it's always interesting for us to see other programs that are out there that we might be able to model and work for us as well.
Yeah.
Were, were they emailed in responses or?
It was on Facebook, so we put on Facebook. It was on Facebook, so we put on Facebook, and I did a, like a survey, it was a website that did a survey, and then people, you know.
Everybody shared it, I remember sharing it to a bunch of people.
Yeah, we're very surprised to get that kind of responses, and some of them were pretty harsh criticisms, which, which we needed to hear and stuff, but, you know. I think the biggest thing is, we got some open buildings downtown that are frustrating some of the retailers where they're getting approached on getting filled, and they're saying no, because they don't want that certain business in that building.
And then that is one of the challenges.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's feeling vacant buildings with property owner doesn't want to necessarily build them.
Yeah.
We talk about vacant buildings quite a bit, and commercial vacant buildings are different. But even like, say like Dubuque and stuff like that, the larger cities are having these issues, and it's how do we address it?
Right. Because, I mean, it's like holding us hostage for what we can do downtown.
I feel like if you're, I'm a building owner downtown, I feel like it takes, you know, if I, so happens to close up, but I gotta fill that spot or something.
Exactly.
That's part of responsibility, so.
Right, right.
Would you be willing to share the data you guys pulled off of that survey?
Yeah, I forwarded the survey to Tim, so he could forward it, I think.
I didn't see it.
Oh, okay, I'll resend it then. It's a big file, so maybe I send it in seconds.
Laura just sent it to me, but I'll, I'll get that forwarded to all you guys. I thought it got forwarded to everybody.
Yeah, that's it.
How many empty business funds do we have downtown?
If you count whiteners, it's five. You got that Franklin Street, you got the old jewelry building, you got now where New U was, you got a huge building, so. Yeah, so technically, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
And then the diamond shop's still empty?
Yeah, it's been empty for, what, three, since I moved, it seems like I moved back ten years ago. And, you know, whitener's has been for sale for what, three years now, so.
What are our options as a council as far as enforcing any type of?
We have to create norgits first. We don't have norgits in place as far as abandoned or empty buildings, storefronts.
I don't know what the rest of the council feels about it, but I think it'd be something we should look into. I mean, downtown, with it being half, half-empty the way it is, it's not helping our community at all.
Yeah, it doesn't help that, you have Highway thirteen going right through, you know, hundreds of thousands of people seeing it, so.
Yeah.
It's hard to get young people
It is.
to invest into a business.
Yeah, I see it right now.
Yeah, if they wanna come up with the idea and sell balloons.
Yeah.
Yeah. They gotta have a marketing program of how they're gonna sell their balloons or whatever, and invest into that property, and, and, you know, when I own my own store, it can be quite an investment, and you're trying to watch every penny, and, and I agree, if there was some sort of way to make it better by getting a bunch of the information you got on some of them other towns. I think that's really where we need to start to see what they're doing as far as, like you said, they were putting a fine if they didn't fill the buildings.
Well, it wasn't a fine, it was a registration fee.
Oh.
Yeah.
You have to register your empty building.
Right, but I'm just saying, something in that, I don't know.
That comes down to, that way, the police department, they're, they're, you know, it's an empty building.
Right.
So there's something that should happen, you know, as an empty building, the property valuation drops.
Right.
So they're paying less in property taxes, which also covers less than for what, the same services that everybody else is paying for.
Yeah, and I do think I've seen on clerk that maybe some other cities are, have some more aggressive ordinances as well.
I mean, like, the Hughes dress shop, I don't think that's ever been open, and I never remember that.
It was up until ninety, it was ninety-something, I think, wasn't it? Yeah.
Me born in eighty-nine, I don't remember it being open, so.
I wouldn't shop there anymore.
One, I will say one positive thing about that survey too, I did have a, somebody that owns a empty storefront downtown, and they wanted to see the results, because they wanted to see, like, what people wanted, and you wanted to try to find somebody that wanted to start something on that specific. So, yeah, that was good to hear, but.
I think that would be interesting to me, to see what people want, because
Yeah.
I don't know what somebody else wants.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's nice that you have asked that question, I think.
Yeah.
And I'm excited about the idea of all this working together to try to.
Yeah, that's the big thing, it's, that, that was one of the criticisms is, you know, a lot of the organizations of Manchester don't work together, they're always fighting. People are blaming one person, you know, and I think that's the big thing, is everybody sit down together and try to figure out a giant plan, so. Get this figured out, because I don't wanna see Manchester throw it out, so.
Nobody does.
Yeah.
Okay.
You definitely hear a lot of people who likes to see different places.
Yeah, hey, sir.
Half a dozen of these join snowders up street. Have you include cases?
All right, thank you, everybody, really appreciate that. All right, next we have parks and wrecks, or the Parks Department trailer replacement. I think you're gonna talk to us about that, Tim.
Yeah, we're looking to replace the sixteen-foot utility trailer that we currently use. It is rusting, it is falling apart, it's aged, so it's time for it to be replaced. Staff can go out and get three posts. We have trailer sales, I had the lowest point on aluminum trailer, fifty-three hundred dollars. We wanted to go with aluminum fair, see if it holds up a little bit better with the salt and dryment. The silver's rarely used, so I'll pick your tables, lawnmowers, lawnmower with the stone a little on there. So it's used on a regular basis, it's not sitting there in the yard, it's getting built behind JJ's truck all the time. So it's three hundred dollars, and we can update, upgrade that trailer.
There's no questions on that, or does anybody have any questions about it?
We have monies to pay for that, Tim.
Yes.
Yeah, I think Doug discussed it a bunch of time, and I think he would put in some money, or there was money there for the trailer.
I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase of a sixteen-foot aluminum trailer from Greencock Trailer Sales in the amount of fifty-three hundred.
So.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Marion?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Uh, yes, I was just looking at the brands of them, just to see if there was much of a difference, but yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay, next, we're gonna have a discussion, Tim wants to talk to us about the downtown stormwater study proposal from Bergram.
Yes, as I alluded to a little earlier, we are looking at planning and implementing staging downtown repairs, the streets need to be updated. If we're gonna do total reconstruction, we look what's underneath the ground. Part of that includes looking at the storm sewer and what our needs are. We know we have issues with stormwater cooling, ponding, whatever you wanna call it, up on Madison and Butler Street, Madison Fayette. And so, how can we address this stuff, and it'll be, is the time, at the current time? The other item we have going on is West Marion Street Bridge gets, uh, renovated, reconditioned. And so this is the time for us to look at that underground stuff and plan what we need to do. Part of the question is, what size of pipe do we put in the ground to handle the stormwater runoff that we have right now? And which way is the best route for it to go? And we can't do that unless we have a study done to see, is it better for us to just go down Butler Street towards the river, or is it better for us to come south of Madison, go between the downtown, tie in some other areas, and go out south of the bridge and West Marion Street? There are some things we need to look at, because one of the things is, the larger the pipe you put in the ground, the more it interferes with sanitary sewer lines. Water mains isn't such a big issue, because we can allow pressure there, and we can go up or under it. With sanitary sewer, it tends to be ungrady, so you need to keep that line in a flow. But what I'd like to do is have Ryan talk about it, Ryan, you wanna hear us start it?
Good evening, Ryan Wicks with Bergram. Tim gave a pretty good summary there, but this is an item, it's been, present, really became more noticeable in about twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, when the property at the intersection there of Madison and Butler was transitioned from a prior church that had an entry that was half a flight up to a permanent building, had an entrance right at the curb level. There have been projects through the years, and actually, the history of those projects, we had some projects on Madison, they had two thousand and two south of there, Madison, Delaware, Marion was two thousand and one. And then on the north, north of that location, Union Howard, Madison Tama, there's about twelve, fourteen blocks, we're done in two thousand and seven. At that time, there were some changes at Storm sewer, we had actually upsized Storm sewer at that intersection. We did take it, so we'll go east in a twelve-inch pipe, and also go west in a fifteen-inch pipe. And there were some changes, the city did too with grading there. Prior to two thousand and seven, there was a low area, further west on, well, around, you know, Butler, near between basically Goslings and, what, the, to the north? So that's where all the bonding happened then, and when we did that project back in two thousand and seven, the city, one of the property commons was from Goslings, well, there's all these water pounding out here. So it's not really something that, it changed and impacted where a pond did change, but the fact it was present never really changed for the area. As Tim mentioned, size of pipe is important to understand too, because right now, today at Butler, there's a very close crossing between the Storm sewer pipe and the sanitary sewer today, so if we put it there, pipe down Butler, we have to understand how that might impact the sanitary sewer. So o- options of doing multiple pipes that are smaller, that run side by side, but that takes up more, more looking at a box structure is an option there too, so. One of the things that we've talked, and it's been a discussion with city staff probably almost ten years now, is how do we best address this, and we've really been talking, and not necessarily waiting to do so, but there wasn't a cunning project, but there is the option of the westbound Butler, if we looked at that length, we looked at the length that we go south down Madison and Altamirian, they're almost the same length. Right now, we're looking at up to four or five phases of downtown improvements, and we tied up the bridge, the bridge is separate from that.
Right.
But in that sense, we're likely going to be digging up Madison Street South, East Main Street, Delaware Street, front post office, that street's physically is not doing well anymore. It's been overlaid a few times, but bring that through these streets where we're already anticipating construction. If we go west down Butler, truly no short-term plan to reconstruct Butler, it was overlaid. Probably longer ago than I think now, but seven, eight years in that timeframe. And this Storm sewer west of that Franklin Street, or west of the highway, is serving its purpose there too. So one thing we're looking at here is basically starting from Union Street, ordered down Union Street on the north and south to about West Marion. Franklin Street, the highway on the west end, and then going east as far as the drainage of Madison comes back. If you get to Tama.
West Marion or East Marion?
East Marion, East Marion. The Storm sewer on Tama Street pretty much all goes east, so it's a separate storm drainage area there. So the intent there would be to do a detailed study and a detailed model of all of that, and really evaluate what size of Storm sewer, given number of intakes that are needed. And those would all be set up then for those future downtown projects, that would all be figured out and help with budgeting too.
Right.
Right now, we have some preliminary CIP or budget numbers for South Franklin. We're including basically recon of everything until there can be some more research, one of these is looking at sanitary sewer, there's two sewer lines from basically Fairway North up to Delaware, where the major collector then comes from the west. So it's quite a bit deeper, but we have really significant size Storm sewer. We might need to look at modifying that using a deeper line, or again, using multiple pipes versus a single pipe, or changing configuration, so. A fairly high-level detail is desired to review this area and make sure we're planning for the, the best system. And that's why, through doing a study, bringing you guys some options, we can evaluate and have a good, good information, make some of the decisions on.
Any questions?
This is not a decision that needs to be made tonight, but this is something we are wanting to work on, because it's part of that planning process, as we're starting to look at our next five-year, six-year plan. This plays into that, so we're providing the best information that we can, so we don't have surprises. Change orders later on, you know.
The apartments on, I call them the apartments on North Madison and Brewer, East Butler, right? I've seen that pond there, but I don't remember, do they get a little bit of water in the basement when the dose get up that high? Cause I've seen it up over the sidewalk right there.
It gets really close, and somebody drives through there, then that pushes a wave up through there, and that's potential. So they have sandbag those doors.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that they've had water coming through the doors on that wave, the patch is coming up, so as Tim said, anymore if there's a heavy rain, city street department or staff, put road loader signs up to stop traffic going into there, and they will usually sandbag. So it's, it gets awfully close, and there's a high point in the road where it overtops, and it will come south and east. So it comes south on Madison, and will be east on Butler, but it pretty much fills up, fills up the curb on that area. And right now, their entry is only a few inches above the top.
Yeah.
And the house on that southeast corner gets awfully nervous too.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good study to really look into as far as trying to correct some of the problem areas. And to correct, well, like you said, East Delaware is really breaking up kind of bad, I mean. It is, I'm trying to remember, the overlay on that one had to be?
Two thousand and two.
Two?
Their water main ran down it in twenty eighteen, nineteen, before CSP built on the south side, but the overlay was two thousand and two, and there's not a whole lot of structure underneath that.
The two hundred block of West, or East Marion Street is.
East Delaware is Marion or?
Marion.
Yeah, that's gonna, that would be back to two thousand and two.
I'd like to see us look at the whole area, because I think it's important to do the whole area instead of looking at this piece. And this piece, we try to figure out, how make this piece work with this piece? If we're doing it all, looking at all of it at one time, I mean, not doing it all at one time, but, but looking at planning for that whole area, I think it makes more sense then, so that as we get to these streets that we're going to do and so on, we have the knowledge of what's best to do, and which direction things should be going, as opposed to putting something in that looks like it's gonna work for this area, but then it doesn't work two blocks down, you know what I mean? I just think we're better off to look at the whole area like you're suggesting, so I think it's, I think it's a good plan.
And that's with the forty-six, it, it encapsulates that whole.
Well, that whole area, and that's one thing with that, 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 that part of that fee is in general, that is part of what would be the overall fee of all those projects in the future anyway, so it's not like a separate fee that is on top of the future worth it.
Right.
Pulling some of that out early, so we have a better understanding, so when we get to the next phases, you know, we've got, we'll have all the Storm sewer pretty much generally, we don't want to find a detail to plan a little, but we'll know how many intakes, what size pipe, how many are gonna be at an intersection, maybe not exactly in these, and we'll have a concept laid out when we get final design, they might be shifted or something, so, and that's where we need to address utility conflicts, well. Part of this is even trying to make sure, if ours, if, when we run cameras down the sewer, if it's in good shape, we don't need to replace it. Let's work around it then.
Right.
So we might talk more about it if budgets happen.
We'll talk about it more, there's a session that I wanted, you know, it's gonna be important.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, thank you, Ryan.
All right. Next, we've been talking with Kirk and Michael, they've been working on some work for us for the airport runway resurfacing project, and we've got a invoice for work completed for that project in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-six cents, that we need a motion to approve the payment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No second. Any further discussion? Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And you, Ryan?
Yes.
Next, Erin wants to talk to us about using ADP for our payroll, is that correct?
Yes. Um, so, I found out a while, not too long ago, that City of Independence has been utilizing ADP, and kind of the history of payroll with the City of Manchester is that Julie had previously done it for years, but with the water meters and the utilities, with all the changeover with rentals and all the different properties, it was just becoming too much. And the deadlines with payroll were hitting up to the deadlines with, with utility billing and getting like nurses out and all of that. It was just, if, we, it was too much for that position, so. But we didn't feel like we could really hire another person for the office, because, you know, trying to keep things lean. So I took it on probably a year or so ago.
Over a year, yeah.
And it's, it's a lot of work, and it's, some of my other items have had to be put to the back burner so that I can do payroll every two weeks, you're pretty well stuck here, Julie is the backup, but only doing it once a year or twice a year when I happen to be out. Then she has to get caught back up, so what I did was, I talked to Independence, they have had good luck with it, and their staff seems to like it. So I got their contact information for ADP and reached out to the gal to just even see what cost would look like. And then looked at what we paid on our most recent invoice to Tyler Technologies for our time and attendance and our and our payroll software, and that, the, what we pay is I put it in the notes there, eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, just for the software alone, that doesn't include, you know, my time, which can average probably between, you know, twenty-five to thirty hours a month of my time, because usually we have two payrolls, maybe three, and depending on the summer, it's way more than that. Then Julie also handles the tax piece of payroll, the W twos. Um, and then does the benefit administration. Going to A D P, this is all, this is what they do is payroll and they've done it for a lot of years. Um, the cost I was surprised at, um, it, I think it's attached to that proposal there to have them do it. They bill monthly based on um, based on the number of employees that are paid.
Mm hmm.
They have, they would have a time clock that employees would have on their phone at a desktop. Um, that could be utilized in that we can allow them to clock in from their phone if we want to, but we can also just turn that feature off when they come in and clock in at their desktop. But what they can do then from their phone with that A D P app is see their paycheck. They can see their um, W two. They can see how much time off they have. Um, it, it's a really nice clean app. Uh, one of the biggest roles we've had since switching to encode is that depart, staff hasn't liked the time and attendance um, that Tyler Technologies had compared to G Works who we were with previously. It's just not the most user friendly program. Um, there would still be work that uh, Julie and I and Tim would do as far as approval, you know, department heads would still do their approvals, then we would go through and do an approval um, review, make sure everything looked okay before we get submitted up to um, A D P to pay on our biweekly schedule. Um, and then they would send me back, they have a person, um, cause my concern is getting it back into our accounting software and they have a person who works or a team that works just with setting up general ledger accounts. So getting me all the information, I need the split outs to enter that then into our system. Um, I had a conversation with uh, Tyler Technologies or Incode, our current providers today about um, what that would mean with them. And we can, we can get rid of both of those modules that we have. Um, I would, you know, just need to print out all the reports and all the information that I would want to make sure I keep for um, however many years. We've only been with them since twenty twenty two, so there's not a lot I need to get out of that system. But um, we would want to definitely get some reports. Uh, but the thought would be then too, that they would do the um, all but forms for new employees would be right there. So if you're coming on as a new employee, it would send you an email. You would fill out your I nine, you would fill out your, you know, your W four, all those different forms and they would be housed there. We would have access to those records. So if we need to pull something up, double check taxes on an employee deductions, all of that. It would all be there for us to see. Um, it's up on the cloud. So um, you know, and this doesn't require action tonight. I wanted to bring it forth to the council. Um, because I do think it's a good opportunity for us to um, free up some staff time cheaper than hiring another person.
Mm hmm.
And with a company that specializes in it, so they're up to date on the laws. So there's a base fee of sixty dollars um, biweekly and then it's basically five dollars per employee, but that takes care of then they do all the nine forty one reporting, all the um, quarterly reports to the state. They do the W twos. Um, they take care of handling all those things for us.
Um, do you think, I mean, do you have an idea kind of, is there a savings for doing it this way a little bit?
There's a staff time, huge staff time savings.
That's the opportunity savings we're going to see. That's good for staff to do other things to get done.
Yeah. Their total investment on year two, that's kind of like two plus, so two on out. On the very bottom of that, is that what we're looking at? What it would cost us to have the A D P?
Annually.
So we, we'd be looking at hundred and thirty two dollars a year savings, but that's not including staff time.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And then, I'm familiar with A D P and how it works um, on the employee side. And it's, it's a pretty decent program, I think. I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot better than the one that we had when I was in the army. I can tell you that. So and that, and if they're, they kind of run neck and neck against each other, kind of, and the way I feel about it. But yeah, you can get on there and check your stubs and, and everything easily. It's a lot easier than hypers, or not hypers, um, going with the military use though.
Yeah.
Is there a time that this quote is for, when I looked at this originally, there was a, a date on.
Yeah.
Said the quote was good until, and I see that's gone now.
It's not in there. I think it was good until the twentieth.
And so I, you know, we needed to make a decision.
That gets us a year free. If you want more time to think on it, I mean, we, the year free, so if you see at the very top,
Mm hmm.
Um, you get twelve months free. They would spread that out over three years. So like month seven through ten each year would be free. So that's where the, the annual investment of the fifty nine thirty four. Action.
How many hours did you say you usually have a week on this?
A month, it's probably about thirty hours a month because I do every two weeks and it takes me.
Three weeks.
A good, you know, day and a half to two days.
Not, not quite a, a week's worth of work in, for a month, but pretty being.
Yeah. And then Julie has the time on top of that doing the, she does the tax recording and all of that for us.
So she does nine forty ones.
Mm hmm. She does all that and the hypers and all of that. So um.
It does take a lot of time. Cause that's what I do on my own. It's, that's very tight.
Yeah. And then when we get to summer, when we add fifty more employees and trying to wrangle up a paper.
Trying to get it.
And get their time. So.
To me, it makes a lot of sense to go to the A D P.
Yeah.
So why would we not put right now? I mean.
I just, I want, make sure you guys have adequate time to think about it. Julie and Tim and I were on a conference call on Friday and kind of hashed out some of the questions that we had as far as implementation, how it worked, what access we would have, if there were errors, how soon they would need the information from, you know, like, how soon do we need to do our review?
Okay. So you're actually giving us the, do you feel that you're ready? I mean, if, if we, if we said we want this right now.
Yeah.
Would you feel that you are prepared?
Yeah.
To accept this?
Julie's very excited about it. I am too. I think um, you know, a piece that's been lacking for us is the employees having access to a lot of their information. Um, the system right now doesn't work well with the police department's shift time. I have to manually go in and calculate that so I can know which hours are shift and which are not. Um, so there's a lot of manual work on the, on the backside. That's kind of what takes up a lot of my time. Um, so I feel like, yeah, I, I would like to have this, but I also understand if the council wants time to think about it. Julie was, Julie worked with it when she, years and years ago, she worked with the credit union. They had A D P there. It's of course changed a ton, but she said they were very good back then and um, easy to work with. So.
You said something about an app on your phone, as long as they can follow, follow everything.
Yeah.
But you said something about clocking in, clocking out.
Well, you know.
Geo location, geofencing.
I was gonna say.
So they, they're happy close to their, their workstation. Uh, so that way, you know, we, we don't have to clock in at home and have, but.
But we can also turn that piece off because that was another concern I had. What if we don't allow them to clock in and out? And just have them do it. Cause right now they go to a workstation and that's where they're doing it.
Right.
Or the department head, you know, if they have to just report right to a site, the department head keeps track of it and is able to enter in their, their information. And so, um.
Cause that would be the only thing that I would question.
Yeah.
We don't have to allow that.
And they might even have it where you can put a um, perimeter or whatever. You gotta do within so close up of said building or something. Like you could do it in front of the building, but you couldn't do it if you were down hardies.
Yeah. And they can put on other restrictions too. So we want to make sure employees aren't clocking in more than five minutes before their shift or, you know, that sort of thing. We're able to do that. The app will, even if we don't do the mobile clocking in and out, the app will still work for them to look at their pace of their time off requests. It'll allow them to submit time off requests from their, from their phone um, to their supervisor. Uh, the supervisor will then be able to see who has submitted time off requests.
And be able to track your vacation as well, correct?
Yeah.
It's all in there in one system. It just, it really simplifies a lot.
Yeah. Cause a lot of time now they have to remember, okay, I need to get this day off. So I gotta check that when I get to work versus, okay, the wife tells me I need this day off. I can submit it right now from home and yeah, we'll see. So um, we feel like it would be beneficial to the city and a positive change. And I think a, a good change for our employees and our department heads as well.
So I, does the council want to take action tonight or do you want to think about it some more?
Well, I think it's a good deal.
I would be willing to take action, but I don't want to force anyone else to do something they can't in good conscience do. So.
I would make the motion to approve outsourcing to A D P.
Are you here a second?
I'll send it.
I think it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good deal.
Very cool.
Okay. Joe?
Yes.
Linda? Brian?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
And Mary Ann? Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Especially as we look at, you know, some staff transitioning potentially in a few years, as they're reaching retirement. I think this will be, you know, one thing that won't need to be trained on.
Yeah. Well, it's just gonna make it so much easier for you ladies in the office to be able to do your jobs and be able to do something else there.
I'm looking at the list of other things you should do.
More assessments, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, also we have some discussion about some security cameras and door access systems.
So, but Ben kind of take the lead on this. Um.
Okay, so um, we currently have seven cameras all over city, all over P D. When I got here, the hard drive, the old school hardware that we had, it was already about twelve years old and it's now failing. So the cameras still operate, but we are unable to recover any of the footage. Doesn't, we can't do anything. Uh, I reached out to a company to ask about the repair, which uh, again, evaluating the system, they basically told me, you know, it's twelve years. It's antiquated at this point. So we, I go there and we reached out, we received three different people, three different companies came in and kind of gave us the ins and outs of what they wanted. Um, currently your system is all operating in our FOAC system, which is completely out of the norm now for anything security wise. Um, there's no cat five running. There's no cloud based servers or nothing. Um, so after reevaluating um, the top one that, that we felt uh, was, was probably the best bank of the book was called Verkata. Um, so it's a larger quote. Um, the only difference is so with Verkata, a couple of other highlights here. Um, as far as the law enforcement sector goes, uh, they've implemented a lot of their systems with artificial intelligence and technology. Right? So any of the cameras that we would implement, if we choose to go this way, uh, we would have the availability to use it in real time. Um, for our computers to evaluate uh, facial recognition, uh, vehicle descriptions and our colors, they even flow in descriptions if we wanted to. So um, with that quote, I know that I worked with Doug, uh, he was looking at the Whitewater Park and um, a few of the other parks, I think Terrell Park and the pool area, right? So um, all intents purposes without worrying you, essentially if we had a crime occur and a suspect, um, let's say they were wearing a gray sweatshirt, we can actually go into the system and ask every single camera that we operate to locate a male that's this height with these facial features wearing a gray sweatshirt in the last thirty days. And it'll go back and find us every single one of the camera. So we can go back even further than the hypothetical crime and attempt to locate the individual. Say if they were the vehicle, the vehicle drives by and let's say we don't have a plate, uh, but we knew it was a green Ford pickup. We could put that into the artificial intelligence and it could give us anything in the last thirty days of any green Ford pickup that came up. And they attempt to maybe locate the plate or description of the vehicle. Um, it does integrate with our Axon. So you know, before I got here, uh, the department upgraded to the Axon digital management system. Um, I found out that it does integrate with that. So any evidence that we pull off onto the cloud, we can automatically integrate into the case file in our Axon system. Let's see, the contract that was submitted is a five year contract. So there is no ongoing fees. There is no monthly service fees. There is nothing. Once, if we decide to go this route and we pay that amount, they will operate the system for five years with no hidden costs. It is a flat fee. So even the, the cameras that are like in the city hall side, which would be hardwired by cat five, the remote access cameras that we would put at the pool or at Terrell Park or the Whitewater Park, which are cellular data, we don't pay monthly service fee on this. So we would be able to maintain those for five years without extra fees. Um, the products themselves are all ten year warranty. So even outside of that five years, if we didn't go with that system, they're still operating under ten years. So we can still re- replace the cameras should they go out in that tenure without costing us a dime. Um, everything is on the cloud now, automatic updates. Uh, there is no D V Rs. Uh, the way it was described to me is essentially that we have unlimited storage. We could go in every day and save up to four hours of footage and then goes to the cloud. And we can do that every day for three sixty five. And keep it until we don't need it anymore. So it does, it'll meet a lot of the criteria for evidence.
And they charge you for the cloud storage?
They do not.
Okay.
No extra storage, no, no uh, fees for cloud storage. Um, and then so for the door accesses, uh, we evaluated three. So it'd be our front lobby, uh, our back door that goes to the garage. And then adding a access to the personnel door back here for the city side. Um, you can actually manage different groups with that as well. So every department head or anything like that, you can remotely access or deny at any time. Um, you will have a log of uh, if we can do pin pads, key fobs, or they can access it on their cell.
Hmm.
Um, so they can do multiple different ways where, you know, if you're within two feet of the door, you can open up the app and hit open and it opens. Um, if somebody for whatever reason forgets their phone, it can be done remotely by any one of the people that the city decides to give power. Um, or you can do keypad entry uh, with a specific code or a key fob and it will log every single entry. So we'll know twenty four hours if we ever have to. Uh, we will know ins and outs, all that information. Um, there are also locks that we can set it up where the locks are broken, tampered with, anything like that. It can be notified by dispatch or email, whatever we decide um, to notify twenty percent of security in that way. Um, trying to think if there's anything else. Air footage, which is pretty standard. Um, again, the, the price is a lot higher, but I think with all the additives in that and the fact that uh, the other two quotes that we received did have monthly fees associated with a similar debt to the cameras. Right? So yes, you're looking at a higher price point initially, but I think over the course of again of five years, uh, what was, I think the other one was what, two hundred dollars a month for the cameras at Terrell?
And yeah.
So I mean, two hundred dollars a month times twelve is what, twenty four hundred times five years. I mean, you're, you're already got past ten thousand dollars over the course of five years or shifting grand.
Yeah. And the three parks were Shrem Park, um, the Terrell Park, the aquatic center, the banjo area there. And then uh, the Whitewater Park downtown. Um, and those, Shrem Park certainly doesn't have cameras that are functioning. That is kind of an isolated area, uh, prone to maybe a little vandalism. Terrell Park, again, another area where the cameras aren't functioning and it would be ideal to have a system. The nice thing is having them all on the same system uh, makes it easier.
We could access groups too. So you know, if there's certain things that some people, well, if Erin doesn't want to access the law enforcement section or whatever the case may be, you can separate those groups out. Um, and the benefit too of going to a system like this as well is, is it reduces the cost over time of upgrading should the city block to evaluate different security options around the city going forward. Right? Because it's all one section, even in that five years. If we go with this, we set a five year contract. And let's say like the city shop is currently diving, maybe a couple of cameras. We don't have to sign a new contract. We only pay for the cameras to be installed and put in. They can hop right out of the system. We don't have to re-sign a contract.
So you can, you can add on.
We can add on. Yep. So as long as we have that contract within that five years, we as a city have an opportunity to add on further security options should we choose.
Yeah. And the access system, the access control is, that was kind of discovered when we had some uh, staffing changeover in the P D. Uh, the system is a manual change to try and do any change to who has access to the building. The back door is just one code. So you give it to your buddy, everybody has it in, in town. When dispatch was here, it was not as much of a concern because there was somebody in the building twenty four seven and there were, you know, the cameras did work um, back there. So they could see, you know, if there's somebody coming in or, or that sort of thing. But now we don't have that coverage here. Um, they would be able to access the cameras though, right? Dispatch.
Yeah. Yeah. It's all web based. We can, and there is no cost for users either. So we can set dispatch up just currently what we have where they can still operate and see everything that they currently see. It's just a little different. They have to operate on a web server and web browsers, but they can still get their own accesses with their own permissions, much like what they have now.
And so the door access would be something that we could manage from a computer and you know, say somebody quits, we can right away shut off their access to the building so that.
Fuck, all of it. Yeah. What we, what we touchable about, we can disable any entry that we should choose. All right.
Yeah. So. After five years.
Uh, just another contract negotiation. Uh, and, and again, so the five years is what they said was the industry standard. They said they're more than willing to work with us to, if we wanted to evaluate, if you wanted to cut costs and approve something like that, they are willing to go down to a three year.
Mm hmm.
They also can go up to a tenure, but they generally do not see that because at ten years, that technology is outdated anyway. And so you're gonna end up paying for it anyways. So generally such a standard is about five, but they are willing to go three if should we want to see what that looks like.
And so the locks wouldn't, wouldn't be on any of the front glass doors. It would be on the door between the P D lobby and where the P D offices are. Right? And then the back door in the garage on the P D side and the back door in the garage here are the three. That would be the, the ones with the access control.
I'd like to add cameras too, if we need them in another area, because we have had a lot of problems in Central Park.
And this is a very large company and um, which I know a lot of anybody afraid of, but they actually contracted a local company out of Monticello. So that was the other portion of um, if we have a camera go down at any of the parks or anything like that, they have, so they offer twenty four seven um, I D support, right? We can call them. If they can't fix it, they can't replace the cameras in twenty four to forty eight hours at no cost. Because of just being so close to their, their. Because of just being so close to their their, you know, their contracted vendor in Monticello, they can ship the camera out as soon as, you know, their IT guy says they can't fix it. And they can have somebody knock it, fix it in a quicker amount of time than waiting weeks, we're happy to do it ourselves. Um but yeah, I mean, even some of the other stuff from law enforcement side down the road, the way things are going, I mean, they offer tons of different things for upgrades. You know, license plate readers, I know there's always been some concerns about wanting a camera, a full corners there and things like that. You know, if the system could operate properly, there is room for advancement down there.
And the other two companies we got quotes from were from Comalec, but they don't do the door access, um they just would do the cameras and then there's the the cellular charge with them. And then Hawkeye Communications out of um Waterloo Cedar Falls area, so.
So I'm gonna ask the question. If we decide to not do anything whatsoever with any of this and just leave with what we got, what does that open us up to?
Uh well, we've already had cases of accidents and hit runs from the city hall PD that we couldn't substantiate, right? At a minimum level since since the camera's been out, right? Where we've received reports and there isn't coverage anywhere that we can articulate a license plate or vehicle description other than maybe witnesses. Right, so that's that possibility. The other possibility is to, um we have a business broken into, um there's petty cash here, there is sensitive documents here. Uh you know, without the ability to recall that, we're just kind of opening ourselves up to, you know, not being able to really do anything about it. Relying on other businesses or witnesses or drive-bys or anything like that to accommodate that data, which is a preferred, it's doable, but it makes things more difficult. Um like I said, the the reason I was really impressed with it was the AI technology, it really does take the work out of a lot of our guesswork. We have a time and we can get a face or anything like that, I mean, we can really go back that thirty days and evaluate, you know, if hypothetically somebody was casing the face or coming in. Um and the other portion of it too is is maybe not so so much for the PD, but the cameras in front of city hall. Uh I can't tell you how many times that, you know, um error, some staff would come over, you're. Chad during the day uh with a disgruntled person over at Waterville, or maybe, you know, something that has to do with the city. Where if something were to occur, we would not be able to recover that footage. So they operate mainly in schools and and other government entities, uh I know that they have a contract with Independence, um their high school over there, they are happy with the system. So yeah, I mean, we're opening ourselves up for liability anyway, you know, we have something, but it's just not up to, you know, the standards of what it should be today.
I just have to ask, just with, I was trying to. Conserve as much money as we possibly can to make every, you know, go as far as we can, so I'm just gonna ask just to.
Yeah, and and like I said, I I am not shy of the fact that it is a large amount of money.
Right.
Um but when you break it down, like I said, that even if we were to go the other way, the two hundred dollars for those services, I mean, that almost pays with the system in itself in five years. You know, that's just the services, that doesn't really include, you know, anything else as far as the camera going down, damage, repairs, IT. You know, e- even then, you know, we still, even though we have contracted these days, hypothetically, we still always still pay for that service. Now, this is not an added cost, so yes, it's higher, but those little nickel and dime items, that's where we kind of get into the weeds that I think even, you know, down the road, it would be more cost effective.
And this is not something that needs to action tonight, something we want to bring forward to you at your tables tonight, they didn't get us this information before the meeting. I did attach it, but there are some handouts about what the technology is that we're talking about. So if you wanna take time and review it, we can certainly put on, we could also probably ask if you'd rather see the cameras and not do the access system.
Yeah, I, they they gave me access to their house building for a week, so I gotta play with the system. It is very user-friendly, and they said that if there were questions, if you wanted to know, they could restart my access, and I can actually show you how they do all the. Or how they showed me how it works and how we operate the system.
How long are they holding the fee that they had quoted to, as I saw it has two six on it, but yeah.
Didn't really say anything, and I got that probably after two six, because initially the initial.
We have to ask on a certain date.
Initial quote didn't even have us as tax exempt, so.
I'm impressed with the fact that the AI will be able to help you guys with your lease word.
Yeah, and and I'm not too worried about it, you know, not so much as the PD and the city side, I think it would be beneficial at places like, especially in the summer. Um what I've seen in statistics and looking at calls like Blackwater Park, uh Terrell Park, Shram Park.
So, we we've seen this in Shram Park where we have some vandalism going on, and so we've gone through, we do cameras at the time that when it was recording. We were able to pick out the vehicle, identify it, and then go after them to do the repairs and uh charging with vandalism and stuff like that.
They are four K resolution, so they are industry top right now, I mean, it is crystal clear, there is no grain, anything, it is.
So it's not like you see it on DVD?
No, no, it is not, it is not uh, it is not cheap gas station camera for sure, it is, it is top of the line stuff.
It's already in our budget for?
No, we would, we can talk about that Monday night about where we look at taking the funds from, we just wanted to get it. Before you Chad Wright's spending, just to get this taken care of, because there have been a couple instances where it would have been helpful to have recordings that we haven't.
Well, the the down at the Whitewater Park, what we have with that bathroom down there, you know, this right here, that's kind of nip that right.
Terrell Park where they kick in the back doors and.
Yeah, that's an area of real concern, that Banchel area and then getting the aquatic center as well.
They are, I are, so for if for us, so they do have very good night vision capabilities.
Good, the thing that, you know, when you invest in this, yeah, it looks like a lot of money, but look at all the money that we've used. Taxpayers' money to go and invest in the parks, and now we're replacing doors and we might not know who kicked them in.
Well, and much to the point to. You know, like your ADP thing where it takes Aaron a lot of time, you know, without that information, you know, especially like JP, you know. He he will hunt down every crack and go through every lead he can until he can determine whether or not he can do anything about it.
Right.
And that's, that's taxpayer dollars that we're trying to figure out, you know, what's going on, which I didn't figure out, but it it does.
Well, it's hard to quantify, how long, I mean, you don't know how long he took investigating, or anybody has spent investigating, say, just the vandalism down to Whitewater Park, I mean. There's no way, I mean, to even track that, you don't sit down and say, hey, I started at six o'clock tonight and started working on this, and at eight o'clock I stopped for supper, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So.
Alright, so we'll talk about this at the council meeting, so if everybody's. Thank you very much, Ben. Okay, so I saw Jason come in first, so I'll let you go first.
Really, isn't anything, we're still working on the, you know, preliminary environmental approvals and everything for the Grand Avenue Trail, working through our PA on a description change there. Based on the work we actually did with uh Grand Avenue last year, that's ongoing, you know, we're still looking it up. Eleven months from now is when they actually let that project, it'll be a twenty twenty-six construction at this point based on the timelines we're dealing with. But beyond that, unless there's questions specific of me, then you're quite the line.
No questions? Okay, thank you so much, Jason, and anything else that you wanna add tonight, Brian?
No, Tim mentioned the downtown stuff, I thought we seen that in the conversation.
Alright, anybody have any questions for either one of them? Alright, we already, Jim's already left, so Tim?
Uh I have heard back from the attorney, we reserve, the union has tentatively agreed with downtowners will add that to the council, the next city council meeting.
Okay, that's good, awesome. Uh, anything else? Aaron?
Uh, nothing.
Hey, Brian? Linda?
Um I had a comment about um Mr. Davis said there's other trash back up in town.
Who?
Joe Davis? Oh, yeah, 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 um is there any way the city could give him a flashing light, because I'm afraid he's gonna get run over. Cause I've seen him zip across the street and you can't see him, you fall right over him, there's anything.
I know he's not working for the city, he's doing it on his own, but I mean, we could give him an honorary light or something.
Some kind of flashing light or something, he's like, well, you're gonna get run over.
I'm sure we can find something white, not. I mean, I have something in my office that's red and blue, but I don't know if people. You'll be pulling this over, hey?
Flashing a little light or something.
Yeah, probably find something.
Okay.
There's, there's a bunch of like subsidized construction stuff out there, like go tanks and stuff that we buy players and things like that, I'm sure they probably got something.
I think it'd be part of his, it's a bit of a year award. Alright, Mary Ann? Joe?
Uh the only thing I got is um I've had a couple of um people reach out to me wondering if we can speed up the process. On developing things in town. As far as like. Um. Um going, going, out of Commerce Court, where we at, um A one store is going out there. I guess there are some concerns that it should be faster at the process and smoother and cleaner in the process of bringing businesses to town, it would help. The belief is it would help the community grow.
Okay, yeah, you and I can have that conversation um and and work through a couple different scenarios and see what what goes on. Uh there is a timeline and process based in our ordinance, but um.
And state code.
And state.
Right, and I and I don't know how much of it we can change or we can't change, but it would just.
And and how much of it is caused by staff or timelines to get submitted. Yeah, we can have that conversation, be happy to see if there's some way to streamline something.
Right.
Yeah, anything else, Joe? Bill?
Nothing.
Okay, um I put a copy of um Dave talked about the efficiency committees. Stuff here, I put a copy of that, uh Brian and Linda came and talked to me about that, and um. I told them that what we're gonna be doing, you're gonna be seeing your um. They felt that it was, I mean, we got down to the nuts and bolts of it, not enough time to be really changing some things, so we're going to be. Um making sure that the council has their board agendas on Wednesdays, can we say noon?
We're actually going to submit them out Tuesday night.
Tuesday night?
And it's easier for us to get it by the end of the day on Tuesday as opposed to trying to procrastinate and get it out by midday Wednesday.
Okay, so what's cut off then for board?
Uh Monday.
At noon, Monday?
Monday noon prior to the the week before the council meeting.
Okay.
So if we have anything we want on the agenda, we need to have it to you by noon Monday and Monday before the meeting.
Correct. In addition, um we'll make sure that everybody is copied in for our committees as far as P and Z, board adjustments, airport. Um when those meetings are taking place, uh probably the um design committee too. Any committees we have.
The only request I do have is if you're planning to attend, you let me know so I can make sure when Tuesday I have.
And you'll get copies of the stuff that's going to and with the dates of those meetings, so you'll make sure that those are going on. Um I, in my opinion, from what is listed here, more of an efficiency committee is probably something more like a task force. If there's something that we really need additional information that way, and we've done task force before. But everything else that was listed here, that's what you were all elected to do. And so I'd rather have you all have time to have the information you want, so you aren't putting somebody in charge of what you were elected to do. So that's how I love that. So um, cause you made a lot of those decisions tonight as you watched, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, um I have, I went to the um conversations with our Puerto Rican families uh yesterday, that was really interesting. I know they have another one coming up in two weeks, a week from next Sunday, and it'll be at the Methodist Church from one to two o'clock again, so if you have an opportunity. Lovely families that are coming into our community and uh just wanna feel welcomed, and we're trying to embrace them into our community, so they'll stay. I know Excel's looking at potentially forty more families to come, so um. Possibility, maybe they could open a Puerto Rican restaurant or something in town, that would be really nice, we'd have some diversity in our foods that we have downtown. But um yes, I have one more thing, so Jim, about the the noise from.
The fans on the uh cryptocurrency, yeah, so we got the information back from Adam's. Uh the fans themselves are rated about seventy decibels at fifteen meters at seventy-seven degrees Fahrenheit. So doing some math on that, there's three hundred fans, seventy decibels. Uh it goes to eighty-one or eighty-two decibels depending upon what math you do, at a hundred feet. Uh I didn't, I didn't write it down by temperature, so eighty-two decibels is similar to a crowded loud restaurant. Uh and then it does drop off considerably as you go further away, now the fans are pointed to up, go up to the sky. Uh they are not pointed sideways like we have in other places, uh and then anything you have that would absorb or block the sound would knock the sound down as well, so. I know there are buildings to the south and to the east of the site, um so i- if there's an issue, tree plantings and stuff like that, we'll all take care of that as well.
And Adam actually mentioned that that they'll be there when we visit, that if it becomes a problem, that there could be some uh barriers. But uh, and I went around and did some more uh testing as far as in front of uh XL trailers. Uh Henderson's, the water tower, the actual site in front of uh Panga, which is basically XL. Or not, is that what they are, yeah, well, of course, it's winter time and the doors closed.
Yeah.
Um everything registered right around about seventy. As it is now, and that's from the building to basically the right side of the street as I'm driving by. Um put it out the window, kind of blocked the wind, and I was reading about seventy decibels. And I know it's gonna be a lot louder when the doors are open, especially like XL.
Right.
Cause on a south, south wind, I can hear hidden hammers in the mornings from my house. And um so I know it's gonna be more, I know there's still some concerns, because I've had some people that have contacted me wanting, you know, would you find out? And I said, well, I'm more kind of waiting on the fans um to really spell it out, but. I feel a lot more comfortable uh knowing now where it's at, um you know, all my concerns are pretty much, you know, and if it is, ends up being louder. Um you know, Adam is willing to put some more more, yeah, noise protection, noise protection out there. And I talked to Wes Holding because I I feel Wes is gonna, his apartments over there are probably gonna be the most affected. Besides John uh Hoffman's farm, and I don't hate John or who they are, and I don't think he lives there. Um so really, it would be just Wes, Wes on the south wind, he his people are gonna be affected, and and he really didn't have much concern.
And that's eighteen hundred feet away from the site, so.
And I know it was brought up about the the kids playground, but that's actually on the other side of of Pango.
Mm-hmm.
Big building, and when I went over there, I mean, it was seventy, seventy-five depending um with the doors closed in the fan room, and so. Yeah, I really don't think it's gonna be detrimental to the, you know, that way. And it's really in the right area for that noise, you know.
Well, it's in the industrial park.
Right, it'd be a lot different if it was sitting between Mayor and Ice House.
Right, exactly. Yeah. Okay, okay, anything else? Alright, I'd like to thank you all for joining us tonight, I'll take the motion from Joe, the second from Mary Ann, we're adjourned, we're adjourned.